We should see a yellow box. All right, and then the video, the audio is returned on, correct? Okay. Okay, all right, and we just need to move the camera. Apparently, the camera is pointed. Okay, now we're, now we're functioning, okay. Okay.
I will just run with the other dimensions as we need to, and.
We'd be getting feedback right now if the microphone were on. Okay, not a problem.
Okay, good evening, and welcome to the City Council meeting. This is the regular business meeting for April 12, 2022. The time right now is seven thirty.
All right, thank you very much.
Julie Reeder pulling up your agenda from the chin. So we are now on to public comments. For those who are attending remotely, you can certainly raise your hands in Zoom or hit star nine. So these are our public comments. The time set aside for members of the audience speaking at City Council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except any quasi judicial matter that is subject to public care. Three minutes are afforded to each speaker. Again, if you're interested in speaking this evening and you are remote, please hit star nine on your phone or you raise hand in the raised hand feature. Ms. Wyckoff, is there anybody raising their hand? Okay, is there any person who is in attendance this evening would like to speak to the council? All right, saying no, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. All right, and that we have closed session. So we are going to be going into a closed session, session for collective bargaining, person, our city of forty-two point thirty, one, ten. I'm sorry, forty-two point thirty, one, forty, subsection four, subsection B, for our initial ten minutes. We will remain in this room for this meeting, and for people who are joining us online, the clerk, Ms. Wyckoff, will go ahead and update you as extensions may be granted. When we're done with the closed session, we will return to this current session online and also in the specified space during the chambers, and we will resume with the meeting. There will be definitely action to follow following closed sessions. We have the remaining time for her. So we are now in closed session beginning at seven or five PM. All right, we are now out of our executive session, and we are continuing with the agenda. The next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Councilmembers. Councilmember Starber, go ahead. I have a motion from Councilmember Starber, a second from Councilmember Hanford. A discussion on the motion to approve consent agenda. Saying none, vote all in favor, say aye, all opposed, extensions, motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is new, is new business. The first item under new business is confirmation of appointment for community human services advisory board position, and this is with Ms. Wyckoff. Ms. Wyckoff, go ahead. Yes, yes, I'm back here again, and I can return my phone. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilwoman Julie Wyckoff, City Clerk. Before this night, we had a request to confirm the appointment of Paul Stayback to the staff. Excuse me, Community Human Services Advisory Board, also. As we made recall, Mr. Stayback was appointed to a non-voting ad hoc position back in February. At that time, we had a couple of reservations, and now two vacant seats to fill. We asked him for data if he would be included in the onset of the voting number. He graciously said yes. And so now before you is Mayor's request for confirmation of his appointment to a voting position.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wyckoff. Are there any questions or motions in council? Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
I move to confirm Mayor's appointment of Paul Stayback to the Community Human Services Advisory Board position eleven, a vacant seat with a term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kenny, a second from Councilmember Culture, for the request of action in this agenda bill. Is there any discussion on the motion? Saying that, and we will vote all in favor, all opposed, extensions, motion passes seven zero, and very much. Next item on the agenda is item seven point two, business, this seating selection, and I will go ahead and turn to the conference.
Mayor and Councilwoman again. Tonight, we haven't had in-person meetings up until just recently, so tonight what normally happens during one of the first meetings of the year. We are giving council the opportunity to choose a seating order. The rules of procedure dictate that on every even year, selection order will be determined by majority of each council member and the numbers of years served on the City Council. In your agenda packet was a list of council members and the years that they were appointed for each last year. So with that said, and of course, I didn't translate that much, but I just want to go back and find my. One moment. Very, I'm having technical complications. I don't know how to move this screen here.
And you were just looking for the list of.
I was just looking through the list of seniority, so if somebody else has that available, then.
I have it up, and so I can just mention it. The list of seniority is shown here. It's Councilmember Davis, Daniel Holt, Hanford, Starborough, Culture, Fisher, Kenny. And I know Fisher and Kenny started the same date, so I think that was based on a flip of the coin for this. So, all right, go ahead. Councilmember Campbell?
Yeah, actually, those are just news that you made. Actually, I mentioned, started in November of twenty eleven.
We'll make an adjustment to that. So, Councilmember Gil, it sounds like you would be first standing on the list. So we'll go ahead and we'll update that. Anytime, I guess, the question for council is whether or not you're comfortable sitting where you are right now, because I know that some changes were made earlier this year when we started doing these meetings. Are very many councilmembers like to change seats where you are right now? Councilmember Culture, go ahead.
Okay.
All right, sounds good. So we'll note that for right now. Councilmember Hanford?
Yeah.
Okay, is there anybody else who'd like to change? All right, let's start off with Councilmember Hanford. What would you like to change to?
I would like to change. We're down one more.
At the next meeting, you will be where councilmember.
Yeah.
Okay, so with Councilmember Hanford moving, Councilmember Culture, is there any other councilman with greater seniority than Councilmember Hanford that wants to move based on Councilmember Hanford's move to Councilmember Fisher's position? Okay. Okay, council, okay, councilmember. Tell you what, let's make this simple. Councilmember Hanford, don't move anything. Councilmember Hanford, please stand up and stand behind Councilmember Fisher's chair. Okay. So, Councilmember Hanford, Councilmember Campbell is fine where he is. Councilmember Davis, did you want to move? Okay, so stand behind that chair, please. Thank you.
Everybody except Mr. Campbell.
Okay, all right, Councilmember Starber, did you want to stay where you are? Okay, I think Councilmember Culture, it's your turn, or you want a minute? Go stand behind the seat. All right, and then based on the flip of the coin, Councilmember Fisher, where do you want to move to? All right, and Councilmember Kenny, based on the flip of the coin, which could go in the other direction next year. You can, you will need to move. Okay, so stand there, please. And the reason why we're doing this is so that staff can write down which positions you're in. All right, so staff, once you break down which positions people are in, please let me know, and then you will resume. Okay, so the way that they are seated from where I am seated, going to the far side of the room, Councilmember Campbell, Councilmember Davis, Councilmember Culture, Councilmember King, Councilmember Hanford, Councilmember Fisher, Councilmember Starber. All right, please resume the seats you're in originally, and we'll do this again in January. Okay, we are now going to move on to the next item on the agenda. That item would be new business, item number seven point three, OPMA regulations, and this will be with Ms. Wyckoff. Ms. Wyckoff, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilwoman Julie Wyckoff, to put it to the record, tonight I am just returning from an event to the OPMA, what we call a meeting that was recently enacted by legislation that just happened during these last seven months. And of course, I'm running with the same issue that I had last time with technology, so give me one quick second. I'm just trying to find, trying to highlight. So, our committee is coming, Mr. Bell, what is in the panel as well, so if you have any questions that I'm able to answer, I'm sure that you would be more than happy to. So, in Grovet State House Bill thirteen twenty-nine, which was recently passed by legislature, there are changes to the OPMA. And some of those changes took effect immediately on March twenty-fourth. Some will not take effect until June ninth, and yet others will take effect when the government's proclamation comes. Briefly going over those changes, the first one related to control location requirements. The new law allows us to have virtual only meetings only during a declared emergency, unless we publicize them while the public is looking at participate. So what that means for us is that if any board commissioner committee is not already having an in-person or private meeting, the staff needs to prepare to go back to the in-person meeting as soon as the proclamation is lifted. Online posting of agendas affected March twenty-fourth, that there was a law that was in place for posting of agendas where it's essential having to do that if you have fewer than ten employees or if you have somebody dedicated to website activities. The new law makes even more kind of tight regulations for that. It has to do with the property values of cities that not going to really go over it because Monroe does not qualify. So if we're, if we're not already, you need to, that all meetings are necessarily supposed to be outlined every twenty-four hours immediately to start the meeting. Related to public comments, the public meeting, the new law requires the opportunity for public comments of any rate of a meeting where final action is taken, except during emergencies, and final action is defined with all tip or negative discussion or vote. The new law also allows for either oral or written comments, which must be distributed to the body and allows the body to set a deadline for. So what we need to do is any board commissioner or committee that is not already allowed public comment during the meeting, that's within the agenda, and if I have other members accordingly, and also we should ask them language to our agenda. By the public, the new law encourages that does not require the voting of public defendants. Right now, Monroe is continuing to allow virtual public speeches, all our board commissioners to be. So, and staff will need to go to their respective boards for meetings on a private.
There's my opponent, I pause you for a moment, Councilmember Starber, excuse me.
This is red?
No, I got, did I mention you were talking about the forty and every seventy, and there is that going to be two forty-four of March?
No, that one's coming up next, and you're already doing it, so it doesn't leave.
To clarify, we're not recording executive sessions, we're just indicating in the minutes when we go in, and the extension is correct.
So the, the new law actually is just about reporting the focus. When, when lawmakers talk about reporting, they're not actually talking about recording, recording with audio and video in this first case, they're talking about writing it down up to the official record of the meeting. So the new law is about the purpose of the, I think a question, see, would.
Thank you. Okay, please continue. Thank you.
And. Self-attendance by the body. The new law allows real participation, participation by members of the body during a declared public emergency, and also allows for the real participation for non-emergencies during, if the approach is permitted by the body to do. So what we need to do is any bylaw or rule secret of order, as being amended to request real participation in the public, and I'm also waiting to draft in the next chapter four to get all board information of real participation. That question one, and that is a lot of fun, so I just have.
All right, thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions? All right.
Right, the next item on the agenda then is item new business seven point four. This is the law enforcement sergeant memorandum of understanding with Mr. Worthing. Mr. Worthing.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilwoman. Tonight before you, there is memorandum of understanding, MOU, which seeks to modify three items in the law enforcement sergeant's current collective bargaining agreement. Modify language in Article nine point three of the CBA to reflect legislation enacted by the state of Washington related to body worn cameras. Schedule change the bargaining unit from three PM to three AM to five PM to five AM. This change ensures supervisors on patrol twenty-four hours a day and provide for thirty minutes pass down between the day and night shift supervisor. And the final thing is add eight hours, eight vacation and luau holiday hours to the June holiday. So for this group, they get eighty-eight hours in luau because they don't get the days off that people like me who are close by Christmas, I'm not at work. The sergeants, they could be at work, so they don't get holidays, they get hours in luau. So this goes from eighty-eight to ninety-six because of the June holiday.
All right. Any question?
Any questions from councilmembers?
Okay.
Saying no.
I know I'm confused. Your mark is Jeff Kelly tonight on here. Okay.
Councilmembers, is there a motion or other questions?
I move to offer a reminder memorandum of understanding with the Teamsters Union representing the law enforcement firm for the modification of Article nine point three of the CBA regarding body worn cameras. Schedule to change a bargaining unit for twenty-four hour coverage and the addition of eight hours vacation in lieu of holiday for June team, and make such minor revisions deemed necessary.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Culture, a second from Councilmember Davis for the request of action in new business item seven point four. Any discussion on the motion?
There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, extensions?
Motion passed at seven zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda then is new business item number five. This is seven point five, Supervisors memorandum of understanding. Again, Mr. Worthing, Mr. Worthing, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening again, Councilwoman. This memorandum of understanding keeps to modify the existing collective bargaining agreements in the city of Monroe and the supervisor bargaining unit represented by the teamsters. All this is doing is changing Article six point two eight, their cash upon termination, individuals who are eligible to have cash out unpaid sick leave, which can now divert this payment to an HRA Viva account. Why, for reporting tonight, we have three individuals that have indicated they are retiring this year. One is early as Friday, April fifteenth, another one in June, and another one in October, and they wish to divert their sick leave to an HRE Luau account.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Worthing. Are there any questions or motions? Councilmember Kim.
Dare to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Teamsters Union, representing supervisors for the modification of Article six point two point eight cash payment upon termination of the CBA, and make other such minor revisions deemed necessary.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kenny, a second from Councilmember Starborough for new business item seven point five, requested action access in that agenda bill. Any discussion on the motion? Saying no, and move to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, extensions? Motion passed at seven zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item number seven point six under new business. This is ordinance number is William number one, twenty twenty-two, enacted by annual budget with Miss Hazard. Miss Hazard, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the information that is in your package is pretty much the same information that was, so we're both robustly discussed at last week's meeting. The only new thing really, and it's not really new, just laid it out in a matrix with regards to staff's perception of where the council has touches and control over the budget during the process. So with that, Mr. Mayor, instead of going through the whole thing again, I'm just available for questions and nice recommendations just to accept the ordinance for free.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmembers. Councilmember Campbell, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think. You know, I just, I'm going to be voting against this, obviously, as I stated in the last meeting. The only thing I was wondering is if we could get, I did have surprise, we, any comparison on this. Did we find any of that information?
We are actually compiling that for you right now. There was reference made in the ordinance, and my apologies for not highlighting that, that we did acknowledge that those questions were asked. We just couldn't have enough time for publication of this agenda. But we will have them when we bring this back to final adoption consideration.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments from councilmembers or emotions?
Councilmember Culture, go ahead.
I move to accept in first reading ordinance number zero one one two zero P two in ordinance of the city of Monroe, Washington, and the statute, you know, by annual budget process effective January one, twenty twenty-three.
I have a motion to Councilmember Culture, a second from Councilmember Fisher for the request of action in new business item number seven point six, as shown in packet and on the screen. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, aye, extensions, motion passed at six one. Thank you very much, everybody. Next item on the agenda is. Is council report under five eight. So go ahead and go down the line. Councilmember Starber.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Kenny.
I intend to build, I just played a few things with some usually. Very good meeting, given a chance to ask well about her efforts to support the crap. I'll be sending the credit card to you later, because we're busy with the CD. We were in Oxford on Thursday morning. These are, we can start at six thirty AM, and just on a personal note, track started back up again after all. I was thinking of seeing their run, and it's just.
Great.
Thank you very much, Councilmember, Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
And the, the, for this. To the DDM garden, to meet people in their town, so we were the one that was there, that garden together. Super, super awesome that. This is great, we always just really good things, the red ones really just grew up and gave us a little bit of a welcome. So that was kind of a fun to meet them and go through all that and stuff. And then there was a post on Facebook about getting down, maybe by walk, and you know, my wife, we.
Going down there, so we went down there on the under.
And.
Going down there. So we went down there on the under and. He went for a walk. I walked and actually it was like, we have a lot of crap. They're all down there and it's like, and we could see who it was. Definitely so. That's my.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Fulcher, go ahead.
Yeah. Wednesday last week to visit the Hilton family. They were very great. We also got a chance to meet our new representatives. I cannot remember their names. Oh, yes. Keith Donner and Mike Steele. Yes.
And.
Anyway, that's about all I got for tonight.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilmember Davis.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember.
Before this, and so that went well. And I just want to address the council proceeding and the reason why. Why I mean, there's nothing against anybody here, but I like the fact that we can be split up and I, but I don't want to be happy. I don't want to be a couple guys in here. Those new guys kind of cuts exactly opposite of all the time. And so that's why it's important to mix it up and not be. Exclusive. Thank you.
I really appreciate it. Councilmember Denver, because of where you are in your surroundings, you show this and wanting to mix things up like that. And I really appreciate that. Thank you. Councilmember Daniel, go ahead.
I was just trying to make it easy. You guys are gonna have to change names.
There's living in that.
And I like the screen right there. So a couple things. I didn't report out. So the we talked about the Monroe Public School Foundation auction in fact in March, we did. Those efforts of those that participated, really appreciate it, brought in close to seventy thousand dollars through that effort. Hopefully that's our last online one for a very, very long time. Yeah, not not bad for for online. I'm gonna try to figure out a way to incorporate a good part of that, but everybody is really looking forward to in person, you know, this next year. But that will go directly to the Monroe School District and for scholarships, which I'm trading through right now and will be awarded those in the not too distant future. And then teacher grants and all that kind of stuff. I do know, so we I see we have a school this year next week on the extended agenda. If you want to talk also about S R O discussion. I'm concerned for the level of not passing all that. And I think that's a pretty important item for me personally that we make sure, especially in the times that we're in, that we're supporting that effort. I think it's a fifty fifty split. I think it's fifty fifty, is it not?
I think it's about three quarters, four to three quarters or two thirds. Yeah, so I'd be very much interested if there's an issue there with funding on how we can do to support, you know, the school. I don't want that to find out, round it out. I know we had
something similar that happened and it was just kind of, you know, I just, I don't want that to happen. We're starting to get back into playing a thing, so. Yeah.
Anything further, Councilmember? Yes, I do.
Great. We can bring that back. And maybe even have that for discussion when. They are. We have the the numbers. And then the only other thing is just if I'm sorry, was I was asked to serve again on the economic advisory group with executive summers that kicks off this next week. So that's really helping the the rest of the county stop from from the county side. That's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Just the, I don't know.
So maybe that we scheduled the conversation for another time on the agenda. So we'll go ahead and pull the data together with both councilmembers and then we'll look to see when we can schedule that for the agenda.
Yes, but I want to ensure that they're not getting the council talking about only the S R O.
So the reason why that came about is the school district and I have school district board president and superintendent, acting superintendent, and I've been meeting with Ms. Knight for the last couple of months. And we realized that there's some value to having a conversation. Just where they could come in and just give an update from time to time. And so that's what the intent is. I will be doing the presentation the night after that for the school. There's just some things we're doing here. So that's the intent. It's just a five to ten month presentation and certainly raising that concern and it would be very appropriate for that time. And then us having that as part of the an agenda, you know, in the next few weeks or so to discuss that. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. We are now going to go into staff and department reports. We're gonna start off with Mr. Roberts. There you are. I I know you're back tonight. Okay, Mr. Mr. Roberts, Hastert, go ahead.
She won't lie. Yeah, so home court for four little push ready to throw it. Could use on the blueberry lane drainage improvement. We got through the sixty percent design with the Department of Ecology approval. Does he turtle? Shout out to Mr. Peterson. And we worked really, really hard to get through this process with ecology and give them the regulation. They're pretty darn good. So that's gonna be moving on. We'll have it constructed by twenty twenty three and then we'll start work on the top side and then everybody actually. So I just want the water to go away, but you know, everybody has lots of parking out of camera. So next thing on there, solid waste services update just kind of give me a run through of what we've been meeting with Republic and now that we're gonna get back together with them. That's great. That was up here earlier this week. Spring cleanup is coming. It's gonna be on May twenty first. That'll be started on, like, politics has been. And we're going to be engaging them in conversations about communicating some of the upcoming changes that are gonna be happening, including adjustment to collection days. And we kind of went through that with them informally and it will include up to stickers on people's cans saying, hey, you're the collection. So I had a full group in my mind. Yeah, it comes up on that one because I can see the vocals from that. There's obviously the usual statistics in there and a quick run through of capital projects. Mary, I think we're reporting back to you. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Roberts?
All right. Thank you. Next presentation starts from Mr. Farrell.
Is there somebody else presenting?
Mr. Mr. Johnson, if you're presenting, just raise your hand. We're just gonna break it over. You're presenting.
All right.
Counsel, update for the report for parks is we have a longtime parks employee retiring, Dale Olson, who's been with the department for thirty two years. Interesting fact that that Mike Farrell included in the report is when Dale started, there were only three parks that was that was in charge of taking care of, and today they're seventeen. So obviously, the department's grown quite a bit. And then we would like to say welcome to McKenna Olson, no relation to Dale. She's took, she's taken over Denise Jacobson's position. Denise retired a few months back. And so happy to have her aboard. And then lastly, Saturday, we have the egg hunt. And so we'll be prepared for that on Friday, and then we'll have staff there on on Saturday to set up and help coordinate it with it. And just due to attrition and some obvious retirements, we are a little short. So I just wanted to thank Ben Worthing for coming up with the idea to augment. And then Jacob Roberts and John Landy for just kind of proactively coordinating that. So we get that extra help out there. So much appreciated.
Right. Thank you very much, Mr. Swanson. Any questions for Mr. Swanson this evening? All right. So then we'll go ahead and move on to the economic development report with Mr. Heebner. Mr. Heebner, you're in panel now.
Mr. Heebner. Councilmembers, Mr. Mayor. Go ahead. I'm trying. Let me try that again. Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yeah, please go ahead. Heebner.
Ms. Knight, are you able to give the report?
Mr. Heebner, we're gonna have this night give the report.
Oh, thank you very much. All right.
Oh, I would say probably the biggest things for economic development happening right now are the lodging tax advisory committee. We have applications due for round two. And those awards, those applications will do on April eighth. For tourism promotion marketing, I'm happy to say that the new tourism magazines, Snow and Sky, those magazines were delivered here and I know that Rich was busy today distributing those magazines to our partners up and down the valley. We're excited about the new partnerships. We're partnering with Spanish County and Fulton, Lake Stevens, and City of San Francisco. So a number of partners with that magazine. Our lodging needs assessment and stability study is underway. This is something that the Economic Development Advisory Board was on their list for several years. So we kind of put on board now and it's looking at different sites for all different types of lodging, extended stay hotels, boutique hotels, lamping, RV sites. So we really are trying to cover all of the budget needs that visitors in Monroe might be interested in. And the purpose behind that is then to be able to go out and market those sites for those different types of lodging. So that's something that's been on the list for a while and for really huge hit rate. The twenty twenty one annual report and business survey, Mr. Palmer, I'll be reporting later, will be coming to committee meeting and reporting out on the survey results. City Council has used those survey results in the past in order to identify items that may want to be submitted. Just based upon what the consumers are most interested in. So so council member, former council member, kind of back had asked that those survey results be delivered to the council in spring and post pandemic, this is a first opportunity for us to do that. So really seeing those survey results that come to you shortly. The second round of American Rescue Plan X funds, those applications are due on Friday. So we have gotten together that group of volunteers that will be reviewing those applications. And again, we'll be turning out to come up here shortly, just the number and X of application that we received. Those are capable to come back to you in four. And then finally, the last item is just three business workshops. We had a report of economic alliance. Collaboratively with them. Having the economic development report for the month. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from Ms. Knight regarding the economic development report? Councilmember Kim.
Thank you, Mayor. I was curious about the Snow and Sky Adventure Guide. Who determines editorial content?
So that actually is the collaboration then between David couple and the Sky Valley Chamber, Wendy, City and San Antonio. I'm sorry that I don't know the name of. But it is a collaborative effort. I hope the cities involved in that publication.
So who is representing Monroe in that group?
Oh, so that would be Mr. Heebner and Katie Dark.
And what is Monroe's cost involved in that? What does that cost you now?
That cost is actually covered by two brands. So it's a brand from San Antonio County and then our own city of Monroe, which is in addition to that advertising.
Excellent. So do we have kind of a rotating focus on different communities when we're determining editorial content?
You know, that I think is part of that ongoing working relationship with our partners to determine each issue. It'll be coming out twice a year. So again, just determining what's gonna be the focus for the for the publication.
Thank you.
Yeah. If you have any publication ideas, I'll look at the opportunity. So.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Let me know when it's on time.
I will.
All right. Any other questions, Councilmember Fisher?
I hope the lodging is released there in October. It will be in there at all.
That's a great question. I don't know if they have been working on the. I sort of find out, get back to them. I think it'll be part of the supply, but I just don't know what information they might be pulling up as far as what they're gonna do. So it's a fine.
Awesome. Thank you.
But we can check.
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Knight on economic dollar? All right. We're gonna go ahead now on to their administrative reports. Item ten point one, said administrative report. Take Senator Jennings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So looking forward to April nineteenth for the Finance and Human Resources Committee meeting. We will have that prison survey results from Mr. Palmer meeting. And then Mr. Worthing will be presenting all the employee employment updates and then the recruitment and retention policy will be returning to that further discussion. At the regular council study section, we do have a birthday confirmation and the presentation from San Antonio for it. And then as the mayor mentioned earlier, a presentation from the Monroe High School District, both in our superintendent and from the president of the board, Jennifer. For discussion at that meeting, we have parking on weekly with Mr. Peterson, the twenty twenty one annual economic development report from Mr. Palmer. That's a report out on last year's economic outcome. And it's listed as a legislative session summary update with the actually, that is going to be moved to May and just to adjust them. Our legislative representatives will be On April twenty sixth, we have a pre read committee meeting and we will be hearing an update from Mr. Swanson and Mr. Farrell on the North Hill area park design workshop results. And then how many supply updates from Mr. Bailey. For the regular business meeting, we have on new business, the ordinance for the Connor annexation for first reading and then some reports. I'm sure as we get closer into that meeting, this is directed to last. Any questions?
I have written down on the twenty sixth, the the annual meeting there. Is that still a fact or?
I I also wondered about that as well. And in fact, that had gotten moved to May for some. We'll we'll come back and get that.
Any other questions or any other notices for the extended agenda? Okay, I'm gonna, I don't know if I've let folks know previously that I will be, I will not be available for council meetings beginning or anything else beginning May twenty until June eleven. And so during that time, I'm therefore down with the handling of this and if anything else comes up, I will make certain he's aware.
Okay.
Let's see. Next item on the agenda then is the city administrator report.
Thank you.
Couple of quick items to start to check myself and your chiefener for trying out the closed caption. I understand it's not super accurate and we will be continuing to work with those captioning to see if we can make it better. But we are giving it a try for the first time for those that have difficulty hearing our meetings, just something that we have heard back. We've continued to fine tune hyper for the committee meetings, study sessions.
Councilmember Denver, go ahead.
Yeah, I did want to say when I saw the words start popping up, I was like, wow, this is great. So it was a great effect. And then when the words didn't match what we were saying, I thought, well, it'll be trash.
Thank you. I mentioned, but I'll mention again for the record that the art applications are due on Friday. We've already started to receive more applications this week after the.
We've already started to receive more applications this week. After the Logan Center, they kept reporting to me, we've only received three applications. I said, not worried. More will come before the deadline. I expect that we'll have quite a few applications. And then just a reminder to for council that you put aside $100,000 in this year's budget for additional funding for human services. And that application is currently out and those applications are due on May 17. So again, we'll be reporting a very large investment by the City of Monroe, particularly in human services over the last three years. Really phenomenal investment of everything, social services, safety networks community. Want to thank council for your support for those, for those programs. And that's it for my report.
All right. Thank you very much. Any, any questions for Ms. Knight? All right. Thank you, Ms. Knight. Mayor's report, so I will refer you to more in the swing in your packets. Also, we did receive a request that I emailed to you. I asked you to take a look at your email. Now. Request came from the Evergreen Health Foundation. They are applying for a grant for officially your 2023 community project funding grant. They, with Delany's office, that grant funding would be used for imaging suites, new digital imaging and for our topic.
Would just say that I know what it is. I don't know.
So anyway, the request was for you to sign it. There was a council meeting this evening, the letter is due tomorrow. Like no council members should be willing to, mind their support to it as well. Is there anybody here who's opposed, having their names added to this letter? Hey, is anybody prepared for the opposed, us using their digital signatures on the file table? All right. We will add all eight signatures to the letter and have that sent off to the person by tomorrow. I was flurried about that today at the chamber meeting. This is a reminder from the hospital, you might not know that it could be done. And they're very pleased to hear that it was not just my signature, but it's all of them. So thank you. The next item that I wanted to page you on is I did meet with our two representatives. There will be our two new representatives, the 2023. I was under the impression that when we did redistricting, the representative positions of the other election minister, that's not the case. Our two new representatives at state level are Representative Steele and Representative Gainer. Representative Steele was in Chelan, Representative Gainer, I think, was just in Ashen. So they came through our side of the mountains to meet with mayors in the various cities within, whether it's going to be District 12. I shared with them a lot about our community. I talked about the importance of product group. And then talked to them about a number of other things that relate to Monroe. It was a very nice conversation. I did ask staff, our senior leadership team, if there would be anybody that would be willing to go out and meet with Representative Steele.
Who lives in Chelan.
And everybody put their hand up. So anyway. I am looking forward to building a relationship with them and it was really nice to come by to meet with me. The other thing too is that the annexations, I understand it has been completed. And the reason why I bring this up at this time is that that annexation is in the 39th or 40th legislative district. So something that I believe that they're doing by how they create these legislative districts will actually benefit us because the urban growth area for the city is in a different district.
And I, I don't know that they intended to do that.
But the benefit for us is that we will have four legislators and two state senators who we can talk with, who goes to this. So there's, there's some positive in these areas. Does anybody have any questions about that before I go on?
All right.
Today I gave the State of the City report to the Chamber of Commerce. I went ahead and expressed how grateful I was for the staff that we have. The thing that I mentioned right at the beginning is that no matter how much wealth an individual has, no matter how much influence an individual has, it's people that, that are employed in that organization to create that wealth, create that success. And I just want to share with all of you, I know you know this, but just share with all of you how grateful I am for the staff, those. Disappoint us. Ms. Knight, for example, sent me some speaking notes for May 10, 15 last night. And so that's after probably starting the debate around six or seven in the morning. That, this is one example I'm aware of. I know that all of our staff put in similar hours and have some.
So that was one thing that I shared. I also talked about the great work you're doing. Expressed how grateful I am for your support in 522, Human Services, the Imagine Monroe. Talked about things we're doing with rebranding over the next year. Talked about how the top plan and things started. Went ahead and acknowledged the annexation of the cross county. 650 residents to our community. Acknowledged the roughly 1,500 licenses that were reissued last year to businesses. And I think roughly 800 new businesses last year. And I think we have about four or 500 new lots that are sort of in the pipeline right now. That are similar family detached, a whole number of attached housing projects. So what I had expressed in the week, how amid a pandemic and limitations that have been placed on us, our staff still continue doing work. Our council, we're remote, still continue doing work. I also expressed how much I appreciate the work of this council, former councils and former mayors and staff. And they consider that we're in a very strong financial position and we're not going to play off anybody during the. During the, the pandemic.
I also expressed how I still run in for mayors today, but that's what I'm learning to do. Have them and I say, we're always doing it. Just letting you know that a mayor's, a mayor's doing the entire complex. Still get out of that question, what project are you putting in for? And I keep expressing, you know, care, you know, projects are important. We care about people. That was something that I, I feel everybody in the room today, chamber understood and appreciated.
And to each of you, thank you for everything you're doing to put people in front of progress. So, thank you.
I think that's all I have for working in the chamber. If you want to listen to the audio recording. Michael Whitney from the Tribune recorded it. I'm going to put it up on their website. You can still create a, listen to it. That will be up on Friday. And I will also have my speaking notes, just like I normally do on my laptop. So if you read my speaking notes, they're not going to lie, but here on the audio, there's a couple of. And.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Does anybody have any questions?
All right. Thank you very much, everybody.
We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. And that will be what we're doing. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Just before we go to executive session, I did want to correct one thing earlier in our discussion around tenure was right. We have.
Oh, you have the same date, yeah.
So December 6th, 2011, both council member Hanford and I were in. Filling short what our position.
So next year, we will put the point for those who. I wanted to give them the due, I mean, right. Thank you very much, Councilmember Daniel. Anything else before we move on to the next item on the agenda? All right. So the next item we have on the agenda is an executive session. And what this means for people who are listening in on Zoom is that we will be going into another one of those sessions that is separate from this current meeting. We will be returning back to this meeting to take action if nothing else to adjourn for the evening. We will be going to executive session, pending what, pending and potential litigation. First, there are C W 42.3.110 subsection one, subsection little i for an initial. For an initial 10 minutes. Any extensions will be announced out in the lobby and then also online in this current meeting. And like I stated, come back into this meeting.
Everybody will be back on the screen again. So we are now in an executive set, executive session for initial 10 minutes, starting at 12.00.
For the record, this is Jody Wyckoff, City Clerk. The executive session has been extended seven minutes. For the record, this is Jody Wyckoff, City Clerk. The executive session has been extended seven minutes. For the record, this is Jody Wyckoff, City Clerk. The executive session has been extended an additional seven minutes. For the record, this is Jody Wyckoff, City Clerk. The executive session has been extended an additional seven minutes. For the record, this is Jody Wyckoff, City Clerk. The executive session has been extended three minutes. For the record, this is Jody Wyckoff, City Clerk. The executive session has been extended an additional three minutes.
All right, we're back on the record. There is no further business this evening unless there is objection. We are adjourned. There being no, we are now adjourned. Thank you, everybody.